May I have a motion that we only discuss those two matters for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, discussion and consideration of personnel matters. And one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel. Sir.
Sorry.
And may I have a roll call, please sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Ackland.
Aye.
Mr. Clums.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
I don't think that there is any modifications to the public session, so I'd like to welcome everyone that's here today, here in chambers and via the Internet. We'll start out with the resolution recognizing the service of Captain Brian Cole.
You want to step forward?
Yeah, I'm going to step forward. No, you sit. Unless you need his help.
No, he is very good.
Okay, resolution 2021-13, a resolution recognizing the service of Captain Brian Cole upon his retirement from Pulaski Fire Department. Retirement, huh? Retirement. Whereas, the town council of the town of Pulaski, Virginia desires to extend its recognition to those employees who upon their retirement have rendered a career of service through the performance of their duties to the town of Pulaski and its citizens. And whereas Captain Brian Cole has served the town for a total of 20 years, joined in the fire department as a volunteer in December of 1997, then joined in the department full-time in April of 2021, or 2001, as a firefighter slash engineer. And whereas Captain Cole, due to his constant training and dedication, rose steadily through the ranks of the fire department, resulting in his promotion to sergeant in March of 2002 and to captain in April of 2008 as a supervisor of sea shift. And whereas, in addition to his supervisory duties and responding to departmental call for assistance, Captain Cole presided over the membership committees, which interviewed and evaluated potential candidates for the position of firefighter and represented the Pulaski Fire Department on the Pulaski County Fire Protection Committee, which is composed of members from all of the county's fire departments. And whereas, the most importantly, important duty in the eyes of his fellow employees performed by Captain Cole is his service as the head chief for the annual beef stew and barbecue held each year during Fire Prevention Week, in which over 500 people are fed. And whereas Captain Cole has always done what was asked of him in performing a task correctly and in a safe manner, exhibiting his personal dedication to the community and his fellow firefighters. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the town council sitting in regular session this 20th day of April... Why does it say 2016?
We need to get it.
2021, that the council does hereby commend and thank Captain Brian Cole for his 20 years of dedicated service to the town and the Pulaski Fire Department. Be it further resolved that the town council and all town employees extend to Captain Cole their best wishes for fulfilling and rewarding retirement for a job well done. This resolution is effective upon adoption and will be hereby adopted this 20th day of April 2021 by the duly recorded vote of the town council and of the town of Pulaski, Virginia, as follows. May I have a roll call for that, please sir?
Yes, sir. I want to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2021-13, a resolution recognizing the service of Captain Brian Cole upon his retirement from the Pulaski Fire Department.
I'm sorry, now may I have a roll call for that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Ackland.
Aye.
Mr. Clums.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Gentlemen, Darlene will be right back. She went to get her cellphone. I can't use mine since we're taking. Darlene will be right back. She went to get her phone to take a picture.
Does that still come back to the big screen?
He stayed on the volunteer thing.
Yes, for now.
You had 20 years to take somebody.
Give me a good round of applause.
Yes, and one of these employees can be still retired, sir.
All right, why don't you get up there too, Ronnie?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I miss the applause? Ronnie to get my phone. Thanks again for your service.
So we'll move on to the consent agenda. If you would look over the council meeting minutes from April 6, 2021, and if you look over, okay, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the April 6, 2021 council meeting minutes.
Sorry. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Ackland.
Aye.
Mr. Clums.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
All right, now we'll move to the water and sewer rate presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we do have on the Zoom screen Cheryl Stevens, who is with the Draper Aiden Consulting Group. Cheryl is an expert, a know firsthand, in evaluating water and sewer rates. And we did engage her services several months ago. She is technically retired at this point, as of a week or two ago, but agreed to stay on and her organization agreed for her to stay on until she could have the opportunity to make this presentation to you all and assist us in making any final decisions that need to be made regarding our upcoming water and sewer rates. So with that as an introduction, and she's not in the laundry room today, which is where she's been when we've had Zoom calls at previous meetings, I'll turn it over to you, Cheryl.
Okay. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I was having trouble joining through my computer. Is that because I had not been let in yet?
No, Cheryl, you were in before. I'm not sure what the audio issue was because the other gentleman that's here on Zoom could hear us just fine.
Okay. Well, I'm going to try to do this from my phone, but I wanted to go through the PowerPoint, which I don't know if I can share that via my phone. Do you all have that where you can queue it up?
They have hard copies of your presentation, which I sent out to them, Cheryl, last Friday.
Okay, well, let's just start with that, and I think we can walk through it. So I'll give you all a sentence to get to the PowerPoint. And there are about six items that we need to discuss, some in greater detail than others. One of the first things that we wanted to look at in this work was the 1994 agreement, which is the agreement where the town and the PSA sell water to one another. The second item was to project water and sewer rates for a five-year period. We want to discuss a little bit, maybe restructure how the water usage is charged. In 2017, Davenport did a analysis of water rates, and I went back to revisit that to see how those recommendations compared to the recommendations that I'll make to the town tonight. We did a little comparison to some of the neighbors and other water and sewer utilities in your general area. And then I wanted to just make a list of some financial policies that the town may want to consider going forward. So I think there's a lot of detail in this PowerPoint, and I'm not going to get too deep into the weeds, but I thought I would go over the highlights and have you all interrupt me when needed for clarification or more detail. So the 1994 agreement, as I said, is the agreement between PSA and the town.
And let me just stop you there.
Where the new year rate is calculated, and it's the rate at which the PSA will sell water to the town and also the rate at which the town sells water to the PSA at that same rate. There are actually two rates that are calculated. One is emergency, the other is non-emergency. So almost all water is sold at the non-emergency rate. I looked back over about 10 years of data, and I never saw a year where there was any water sold under the emergency rate, which is below a rate. And the real difference is the, when one party or the other sells water at the emergency rate, debt service and admin cost are not included, if the water's purchased due to emergency. So each year, the rates are calculated by applying the formulas that are spound out in great detail in the agreement, so that after July 4th, July 1st of that year, the new rate will be at that. And then that rate is given over to the, the PSA calculates it and gives it over to the town, usually by March 31st, so that you can make an informed budget decision. And basically what happens is the PSA applies the audit rate to the purchases of both parties, what they purchase from you, what you purchase from them. And then basically, the amount that one party or the other owes the other is then settled up at the end of the year. So again, I went back and looked at about 10 years of rates. I'm sure you know this, but Pulaski, the town sells, the town purchases water from the PSA just to serve the New Bern Heights area, and the PSA purchases water from the town to serve Brookline and Mount Oaknap. The rate, as you can see in the table, there's a bar chart on the left-hand side at the bottom of this page. I'm on page, I think it's four of the PowerPoint. You can see how the rate has varied quite a bit over the past 10 years. You can see in the line graph that the PSA tends to purchase more water than the town. I mean, the town purchases more water each year than the PSA does. The town's purchases are that red line, with the PSA being the blue line. But in general, the, after you've sold water to the PSA, the PSA sells water to the town, your actual cost is 8,000 to maybe 24,000 per year to purchase that water. And in the grand scheme of things, it's a pretty small cost for the town. It's less than 1% of your annual water budget. So the one thing that we really wanted to look at was, I found the impression that no one was intimately familiar with the numbers and how they came together every year and where the PSA was pulling numbers from to calculate this rate. So I compared the PSA calculations, which are very detailed, and they're nicely located in a spreadsheet. And I looked back at their budgets, which is where most of the numbers come from. And the PSA does provide good documentation of the calculations to the town. I think it's important for the town to designate someone who will become familiar with those calculations and then not only look at them around this time, usually March, when the projected rates come over, but then also just routinely look at those calculations compared to the invoices sent out by the PSA. But by the line, I feel like the agreement meets the needs of the town. And it allows you to provide water to the areas, to purchase water, to provide it to the areas that you need it. And it's in accordance with the agreement that you adopted back in 1994. So my recommendation about that is that it works. There's probably no need to reopen that agreement. I do get the impression from talking to the PSA that they've had some expenses at their water plant that could be included in this calculation, and they have not included those capital costs. So my sense is that if you reopen it, the rate is only going to go up. And I think it seems to work for the town now. I wouldn't see any point in pursuing any changes to it.
And I would just say that I specifically asked Cheryl to take a look at that because of the age of the agreement. I just thought it made good sense that anything that had been in existence for that long, and I couldn't find anybody who was familiar with it, that she ought to take a look at that as an independent set of eyes. So I'm just glad to hear that something has been successful for that extended period of time. And I think, Cheryl, it's a 30-year agreement, is it not?
I think you're right. So I guess it would go through 2014? No, it's 2024.
2024, yeah.
We're going to have to redo it in three years anymore, or reopen it, I guess.
Anybody have any questions about that as she goes on to the next thing? Go ahead, Cheryl.
Okay, so the next page is where I start to talk about projected water rates. And just to give you kind of the big picture, this is going to be the case for both water and sewer. But first, I looked at the 21 budget for the water system, sort of as just the baseline of what the expenses and revenues are. And then I projected those expenses forward for FY '22 through FY '26, or a five-year period. And during the time that I was making the projections, there was some back and forth with Darlene and with Bill and with the finance office, just to try to adjust things where we thought they needed to be adjusted to be as accurate as possible. Now, I will say there, I got the impression that the FY '22 budget may not have been as accurate as it could have been. So we went ahead and made adjustments where needed to try to make the '23 budget more reflective of what the actual costs are. Generally, we took most of your routine operating expenses and increased them by 1.5% per year. One thing that is a big change is that we added to the budget $100,000 a year. And the purpose of that was to fund capital projects, or really to fund a capital reserve, so that every year for the next five years, the town generates enough revenue to take $100,000 and move it straight to a capital reserve. And the goal was to have at least $1.5 million in reserve at the end of the five-year period. And one thing that that will enable you to do is, one, fund emergency projects or small projects without having to borrow money. And then also, just as you have, maybe a year, like you'll see this table over to the right on this slide, where it shows your proposed CIP. You know, CIPs tend to be a little bit bumpy. They're higher and sunnier than others. Having a preserve will enable you to fund projects without having rates go up and down, up and down as the capital fund increases or decreases. So the projects on this page are all of those capital projects. And the town, they put together a CIP that includes, you know, some things that are more like vehicles and equipment, replacing of equipment, and a number of like water line replacement projects, et cetera, for that five-year period. And we assumed that everything shown on this page, which varies from $115,000 to almost $470,000 in FY '23, is paid with revenue that comes in that year, so basically funded with cash. There are three CIP projects on the water side that we felt like the town needed to borrow money for in order to accomplish those projects. So if you go to the next page, this page is titled "Existing and Proposed Debt Service." There are three, okay, so existing, you have three loans. And your debt service on those three loans is $278,000 a year. And all of those loans will remain in place through the early 2030s. So as the baseline, we have that existing debt service. There are three projects that we know, that we contemplate in funding with debt over the next two or three years. And you'll see those listed there. One's that consent order related to disinfection by products. The project is about $3.1 billion. And the town has already secured funding from the Health Department, which is a mix of grant and loan money, and it's for a period of 20 years. So you'll see that we assumed that you borrowed that money in FY '22, you do the construction, in FY '23 you pay interest, and then there's debt service of $28,562 each year after that for 20 years. The second project is some water line replacement that the town wanted to accomplish in conjunction with the Main Street project, and that's about $670,000 a year. We assume that would be all loan money for 20 years at 3%. The debt service is about $7,454 per year. And then the filters of the water plant, filters one and three need to be rebuilt. That's about $520,000. Again, we assumed all money. I think it's possible, if you go to DDH, you might be able to get some grant money on that. But we thought extending that worst-case scenario probably made the most sense. So what those three projects would do is add about $40,000 in cost to your debt service each year going forward. Do you all have questions about that?
So just to make sure I understand that, just to make sure I understand that correctly, so, and for anybody else, that basically, we have no current reserve in the water fund whatsoever. There's no money sitting in the account that's being unused. Our revenues and our expenses basically are matching up, and there's no reserve up to this point.
There is an undesignated fund balance that's under $200,000. I don't have the dollar figure in my head. I can certainly get it for you, but you may recall that the council approved taking some money out of that fund balance in order to replace a filter that was in dire need of replacement. And of course, you have, in this capital budget, a request in different years to replace those remaining two filters.
So the only thing that's not listed here is the undesignated fund, which is under $200,000.
Do you remember that exact number, Cheryl? In the, um...
$200 sounds about right.
Yeah, I think it's just under 200. But I'm happy to get that for you.
I see you can only have it as a couple hundred thousand.
Can I ask another question? I'm looking at the water line replacement and the filters, one and three, and I'm having trouble making the math work. Is $7,454 for the water line replacement, is that a yearly payment? Because that times, because that times 20 years doesn't get you to $670,000. Am I wrong about that? This is interesting. No, no, no. In the next year, it's 74, $74,54 times 20 is $149,000. Is it supposed to be, is it, because $74,000 times 20 is 1.48 billion. So I'm just, I'm just struggling with the math on that. Same thing with the 57, 85. That's $115,000. I mean, I don't want to make sure, is there forgiveness in there built in, or?
No, there's not. Hold on, let me check the number real quick. Well, you're right. You're right. So it's 20 years, which should be about one payment.
I mean, $670,000 divided by 20 is $33,000 a year. I mean, and I assume that would be a little more, but for the interest, so maybe more like $36,000 or something like that.
I just calculated 35, so yes, I think you're right. I might be a little bit off on this, you see.
I mean, it doesn't change the number enormously.
Well, it does, actually. It does make a big difference. Because we want, that is going to make a difference. Let me, I'm going to have to go back and, I'll recalculate that in a minute. Let me switch to a different spreadsheet real quick.
I mean, I see the point of it as being that, you know, some of these projects need to be spaced out over time. I was just wondering if there was forgiveness built into that of some kind.
Well, there's not. And we had, you know, when you went to DDH for this $3.1 million project for the consent order, they gave you about $450,000 in loan forgiveness. So it's a little, it's hard to speculate how any funding agency will do on providing your potentially forgiveness each year. So while we might be able to achieve that...
We can't count on it.
We didn't count on it.
Fair enough.
So while I'm doing this, I'm going to go check the rebuild filters, because I very likely made the same mistake on that. And then, let's see here. Okay, so where I have $5,785, that number should be closer to $27,000 for debt service. Okay.
So we're talking about an extra $45,000, $50,000, plus of that $320,000?
Yes, so it's currently, $278,637 is the three existing loans. And what we will be adding to that is a total of 90, about $91,000. So it will go to, from $278,000 to about $369,000 per year. So that is going to affect a couple numbers later on, but I have a spreadsheet open that. I will look at those numbers as we move through. So these are sort of the goals. First, that any excess revenue in any given year will go to an operating reserve. And our goal was to have that operating reserve cover or be equivalent to at least 90 days of operating expenses. Or in other words, about 25% of your annual operating budget should ultimately be in a reserve, an operating reserve for the water fund, and that would be about $450,000. And then, as I mentioned, each year, we would try to transfer $100,000 to the capital reserve. And the final thing is that most lenders like to see that you're able to not only cover your debt service, but have some excess revenue, up to 30% excess of your debt service. So our goal was that each year, the net revenues, after you paid all of your expenses, not including your debt service, would be equal to at least 130% of debt service. So with that in mind... So with that in mind, um, we made some projections, and one, increased your operating expenses, added in debt service, and tried to meet these financial goals. Um, and you'll see the spreadsheet that's on the next page is a summary of those numbers. Now, um, and then a couple numbers are, are a little off because of that debt service. Um, but what we calculated is with an eight percent increase to rates in twenty-twenty-two, um... On here, you can see that, um, well, first at the top, you'll see how the water charges increased with an eight percent increase to rates. Um, most of your other revenues were held pretty stable. Your debt service, I show it on this page at, um, it, it's the, um, two seventy-eight, which is correct. For future years, they're not quite as high as they should be. Um, but let's talk about those after we get through the first two years with the rate increases. So we shared with an eight percent increase that you could meet the debt coverage of a hundred and thirty percent. In fact, you would see that, you'll see down, um, about halfway down the page, it says coverage, bold, one point three or greater. And under FY twenty-two, you see two point three six. Um, actually, that would be closer to two with, um, the change that I just made in the debt service. Um, and then in the subsequent years...
So that shouldn't not matter for twenty-twenty-two, because we're not adding the additional debt to twenty-twenty-four, right?
In twenty-four, yeah.
In twenty-twenty...
So the numbers for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three are unchanged? It's no matter what, no matter what we do, it's the, it's the one point five-five in twenty-twenty-four and et cetera?
Yeah, and those drop down and, um, where it says one point five-five, that would drop down to one point three-five, which is fine. Where it says one point four-two, that would go to one point two-three, which is a little over than what we had hoped. Um, and then the final year would drop down to one point three-eight instead of one point six. So, um...
And Cheryl, you'll send corrected pages of these so we can get them out to the council, correct?
Absolutely, I'll do that, I'll do that tonight. Um, so, um, the other thing is that every, um, you can see the, um, operating reserve, we start with three hundred and ninety-two, um, thousand dollars, which is the excess revenue that is generated in FY twenty-two. The next year, we add a hundred and fifteen thousand to it. Um, and then going forward, those numbers are about two hundred thousand dollars less because of that adjustment to debt service, but they're still within, um, the range that allows us to meet the ninety days in reserve. So, um, I would say with, with the exception of that one year that the debt coverage drops a little bit, these projected increases, which would be eight percent this coming, this upcoming fiscal year, and then five percent the following year, should meet your needs, um, and you can potentially get by with either very small increases in the next three years or no increases. Um, I would say the thing that's the most difficult is one, we have these three fairly large, um, capital projects on the water side that of course have not been did yet, so we don't know what the final cost will actually be, nor the timing of how those will actually play out. So those items will impact the cash flow each year, um, to some extent. That's a little hard to project right now.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask the question more forward here. So you're saying in two years, an eight percent to five percent is thirteen percent, and the twenty-two, twenty-three? So just to be clear, if you had a water bill, which is a hundred dollars a month, you're looking at two dollars and sixty cents increase. Is that right, Mark?
Yeah, let's look on this next page. Go to the next page where, um, it's like water rates at the top. That shows you, okay, so I looked at all, at billing records for about a six-month period, and I was a little surprised that the average residential customer only uses about four thousand gallons per month. But this table shows you the current, just the water rate, not the sewer, not the untrashed, um, just the water rate for three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand gallons per month.
Right.
And it shows the eight percent increase, so you can see what the dollar amount of the bill will be, and also what the dollar amount of the increase would be.
Yeah, what I wanted to make clear was that, it, I guess more forward is when our citizens see their water bill is a hundred, which mine, for me and my wife, is a hundred dollars a month. And it, it's not necessarily the water rates, that's what I want to make sure they understand. It's also the PSA increase, the garbage increase, all this increase is added in, not, this is not necessarily the water rate. That's what, what I want to make sure, uh, cause people get confused.
But do you think at any point that you decide to report with an increase, um, whatever the increase is? It is important in the public hearing and in the messaging to the customers that they understand that the quote-unquote "water bill" is made up of water, sewer, and trash.
Correct.
Um, and I know that's hard for citizens because they just see the bottom line. Um...
And they also always call it the water bill.
Yeah, honey, and that, and that's what I give is my water bill, and I try to explain to them, if, you know, if the garbage goes up, it gets automatic, you want to pay it regardless of whether you pay it as a single bill or if you pay it a year. You, you want to pay it, it doesn't matter, so.
And actually, in my opinion, you're doing the PSA a tremendous favor.
Absolutely.
By putting their charges on your bill.
I agree.
And you get five percent, uh, as, uh, your fee for doing that, but then we're the ones that get painted with, you know, well, that's an increase, and your, uh, PSA did increase, uh, the trash collection fee, uh, this current year. Um, and you did not increase sewer, but you did increase waters, but it was all seen as a water bill increase.
Correct.
What, what is the purpose of not including unassigned reserve funds in with the reserve funds on this? Is there, is there a reason that that's categorized differently?
Cheryl, you want to add? He's asking if there's a reason why you have unreserved as a category and then reserved. Did you hear me?
There's a question related to the large table with the projections of water fund, the previous slide.
In the, in your water fund projections spreadsheet where, where you're factoring in the one point three, or, I apologize, the ninety days in reserve.
Right.
And, and the one point three, is, is there a reason that unassigned funds aren't factored in with that? Or does it have to be held differently for a reason?
Now, the, I think, I'm not sure if this is the question, but the one point three coverage, that is just a calculation to say, do you generate enough, do you generate that extra thirty percent? It's, that, that extra, whether it's thirty or thirty-one or, um, fifty-five over the debt coverage, that does not get set aside into a fund, it's just an annual calculation. Typically, you should make it when you're setting your budget, and then review it at the end of the year and say, did we meet that coverage? But the cash is not set aside in the debt reserve fund. In fact, that extra coverage is really just going to be operating reserve. Does that answer that question?
Can, can I rephrase it slightly? Is, is it like a mechanism you use, like when you get a mortgage on a house to make sure you have enough income to pay? That there's excess income, you're not paying too much in your, not paying too much of your income, like you don't have to pay thirty percent of your income to housing. And so it's the same kind of thing, it's like, do we, are we generating enough cash? Cause cash can go up and down in different months for different reasons. But the bank doesn't, the bank who took the loan out from doesn't care whether or not we have enough cash on hand. It's just a way for us to sort of use as like a guideline to determine whether or not we're generating enough cash flow to cover our long-term expenses.
In other words, it's not two separate funds. It's a calculation, uh, that is used, and in fact, when you borrow from DTH and some of these other organizations, they look at that, sometimes it's a one point two, uh, five, but they prefer to have that one point three. But that's a part of your reserve generally.
Right, so, but I guess my question is, is, for example, in twenty-twenty-two, it says we, the ending balance would be three hundred and ninety-two thou, uh...
Right, three ninety-two, mm-hmm.
Three ninety-two. If we have two hundred thousand dollars in unassigned reserve funds now, what you're saying is at twenty-twenty-two, we would have five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars.
Except we speak of that as your fund balance versus a reserve. We use the terms separately.
Right, so is there a reason that they are separate? Is, is my question, that the reserve fund balance and the unassigned reserve fund?
Generally, your reserve fund's gonna fall to fund balance regardless. Correct, Cheryl, but we don't want to count your fund balance toward your reserve. If you understand what I'm saying, because you should have both.
I did, when I revised these numbers, I think I'll just round it out and put a hundred thousand dollars in the beginning balance. I didn't have a good number, um, from Rebecca to fill in that number at the time. So we just agreed, we set, we just started zero.
Okay, so it would, it would be included in that number?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Regarding, uh, on the income and expense side, the numbers that you listed, for instance, on the income side, I notice is pretty much it's level loaded for whether it be a water connection fee or reconnection fees or what have you. It's level loaded through the end, all the way through twenty-twenty-six. How, how comfortable are we with those numbers? Um, a- as far as, you know, being reality, I understand it is simply a projection. But what is our comfort level with, with the numbers that we've, we've put in those, um, in, in those six years, five years?
Um, darling, I did not see revenues to date on that FY twenty-one budget.
As far as the, uh, connections, um, that's running, um, close to, uh, projections. What's not running close are, um, some of the income projections, because, you know, the governor put the moratorium on both water and sewer, and we give you on a weekly basis how much we are, um, not capturing, you know, at this point, that we hope, uh, with these recovery act funds, we'll be able to, to come in and replace that revenue. Um, and we don't have any, um, interest charges, you know, listed, and I'm not sure if that's on your sheet here or not, Cheryl. Um... But, uh, reconnection fees, we're not charging at this point, because again, we're not cutting anybody off, therefore, uh, we don't have that, and so when we show you, uh, our projections for twenty-two on a balanced budget, you'll see some of these coming down. Um, and I can certainly, based upon the work that I've done in the last week or so, um, on both the water and sewer fund budgets, although we're not balanced yet, I could send those to Cheryl, and she could add those in if that would help.
Okay, that would be easy to do. Um, I would...
But I would also expect those to be a rebound, for example, and, you know, no later than twenty-twenty-three. So her figures, you know, may be good for those other years.
I'm sorry, Cheryl, I didn't quite catch that.
I think she said that, uh, late fees and stuff are under miscellaneous revenue, so it's a relatively small number.
Well, the only reason, the only reason I, I ask is in a, a number of years, while we've gone through, uh, well, the, the Davenport report where we, um, increased water over a period of time with an anticipated projected outcome. I understand there's a lot of variability, and certainly now with, you know, the, the water bills and how they're paid and if they're paid, um, that income, so there's a lot of variability, but we ended up at the end of the day not being exactly where we thought we wanted to be. So I mean, it's, and as difficult as I recognize this is, as close as we can get, and as conservative as we can be in these projections, especially given everything we've experienced this year and last.
Well, my projections will be conservative. Um, with the hope that the recovery act, whenever we find out what it's supposed to do, uh, will allow us to recover, um, at least back to the, um, beginning of two twenty, the year twenty-twenty, which would have been fiscal, uh, twenty-one. Um, but a lot of these, we're seeing, and I'm actually balancing two budgets right now, trying to figure out how we're gonna get out of this year, and then what we expect, uh, the next fiscal year to be. But even on next fiscal year, um, I'm tending to look at it in a conservative way with the hope that maybe some of these other funds come in and help us do something different. Uh, but it's obvious, you know, that, um, we were not taking even our experience of prior year as things were being, uh, budgeted. And then, of course, the COVID, uh, has hit some of those, uh, completely, because nobody anticipated that we were gonna suspend, uh, cutting off water and sewer for as long as we have. Um, another good example that's not in this budget is, uh, the repayment of loans that we have given to families, uh, that got rehabilitation loans from the town with DHCD money. And DHCD has totally suspended that program. So anything that we had budgeted as an expectation that we were gonna get even as little as twenty-five dollars a month in a repayment, you know, that's a zero, you know, at this point, so, um...
Well, I think, and, and the reason I, and one other reason I bring that up is, I mean, this is excellent information, it really is, and it, but if that number in twenty-twenty-two, if that eight percent is actually ten percent, I might get shocked for saying that. But it, but our objective is to make the water fund healthy. And, you know, it's, we rip the Band-Aid off all at once instead of trying, he's, he's telling it. And I think maybe in the past, that's what we ended up doing, and we didn't get the desired results. And I, I'd, I'd like to see with this effort that we, that we get the desired results, we truly have a reserve or a, an operating reserve, um, and, and we're able to, to, to fund those, those issues that, you know...
And the other thing is, you know, if you, regardless of which percent of increase the council ultimately decides, um, and you see that Cheryl has suggested that you need rate increases for the next two years, if we have, um, either underestimated or overestimated what that will yield, you have another year to deal with that to kind of straighten that out. Um, so that if, uh, you say eight percent and, and we do better than we expect with that, then maybe the six percent becomes five percent. And reciprocally, you know, if you start, uh, a higher number and it yields more, uh, or less, you know, then you make an adjustment, cause you'd only be approving a rate for one year at a time. Even though she's projected out for five years.
Well, and I, and I know, and I want to jump ahead in the presentation, but just with the numbers that Cheryl gave us regarding other localities, we're, we're in a good, kind of, we're, we're on the low end, and, so...
But people never understand that, and I'm glad that you all have picked up on that, cause I had that same issue in the community, uh, that I came from. I had any number of people saying, oh, we pay the highest water bill in the state. And I'd give them a list of similar localities that were paying a whole lot more, and particularly even smaller localities, because you just have fewer customers to spread your costs among. Um, so, uh, the, again, there's gonna have to be a significant public relations effort, and that's why we have Jordan, uh, with whatever we go forward with, for people to understand why it's needed and how we compare to other folks.
So, and, and a question in regards to our, the comparison on the, is that purely based off of the usage rate? Or does that include any fees that are tied or associated to water usage?
Are you talking about the comparison to...
Yeah, the charge that you all put together, yeah.
Right, obviously, a portion of the bill is associated to a water rate usage, and then there's also fees and, you know, uh, uh, that are on that bill as well, but...
Right, like for example, you have a fixed fee and then you have a usage fee.
Right, so it, does the comparison include all the portions of the water bill, or is it just purely on the rate?
No, it's the entire bill. No, it's the entire bill.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I, I think on this too, even though, you know, is zero shown in twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, I think depending on what information is, um, cut out for public consumption, it's probably pretty important to s- to make it clear that you're not committing to no rate increases after twenty twenty-three. But rather, this is just a projection, the farther out we get, the less, um, certain things are. So I would be really careful about saying, let's do an eight percent and a five percent, and then we vote increased rates again. Don't do that.
Other questions on this or should she go on to sewer? All right, Cheryl, we're ready.
Okay. Sewer. Um, okay, so the process for looking at sewer was very similar. Um, we use the twenty-one budget as a baseline. Um, now, we did assume some increased sewer sales due to the middle school and then some out-of-town residential connections related to, um, that planned residential development owned outside of town. Um, again, we increased most of your operating expenses by, um, one point five percent per year. We added a hundred thousand dollars to the budget, which would be a transfer to the capital reserve. Um, and the CIP's smaller on the sewer side. So you can see the table, um, on the right is, um, the sewer CIP for the next five years. And because, um, there are not a lot of projects and they're not particularly large projects, um, those can all be funded with revenue instead of debt. So there's no new debt service on the, um, sewer side. So the next slide is, um, labeled existing sewer, existing debt service. And you have four outstanding loans on the sewer side. Um, well, really, you have three. In your budget, you always include your component of the Pepper's Ferry, um, payments. There's debt service embedded in that. So that's one of the, the six fifty-five oh eighty-six is, um, the debt service related to Pepper's Ferry. And then the other three items listed there are actual loans that the town has taken out. And again, those will be paid through, um, twenty thirty-two to twenty thirty-four. So total, the debt service is, um, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, almost eight sixty-nine per year. And we're not adding anything to that in these projections.
Yeah, and I would just point out that we have a huge sewer project, but it's all grant funded, which is the Hardy Project, that we have three different grants for.
So on the, um, financial goals, um, again, any excess revenue goes to an operating reserve. And in order to have ninety days of operating revenues or operating expenses in reserve, um, the goal would be to have about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reserve. Um, and we're able to meet that goal, um, not in FY twenty twenty, but in the following year.
You're saying twenty twenty-two when you said twenty twenty, right?
So, um, again, we transfer a hundred thousand dollars each year to a capital reserve. And, um, the debt coverage of one point three, we didn't quite meet that in FY twenty-two with the six percent increase, but we can meet it in FY twenty-three. So that's up to you. We could increase the sewer rate in FY twenty-two a little bit more than six percent or just have the goal of getting to the one, one point three coverage in the following year. Again, I was, on the sewer side, I was trying to temper the sewer increases a bit. Um, because your sewer rates are a little high. So, um, on the next page, you see the larger spreadsheet that summarizes the key, um, numbers on the sewer side. Um, so I built in a six percent increase in FY twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, we also included over twenty thousand dollars a year as revenue from the middle school. And that's based on sort of a combination of their water usage recently, which we realized is a little low because students weren't fully in school. Um, but then we looked back at the water usage at the middle school that this one replaced and base those calculations on the usage data. Um, we assumed on the residential connections that you get about twenty-five out-of-town residential connections each year over that five-year period. And assuming that they use about, um, I think I assume four thousand gallons per month per home, that they would generate about thirty thousand and then sixty thousand. Uh, each twenty-five homes would generate about thirty thousand dollars per year, um, in revenue. And since they're out of town, they're charged the out-of-town rates. We assume some connection fees from those homes. Um, and then the other numbers would pretty much carry forward as they were budgeted in FY twenty-one. And those two, darling, I will adjust those when you get an adjusted twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Yeah, I'll send that to you tomorrow. We've done all of that work.
Um, so then on expenses, I don't think there's too much to talk about there. The debt service stays the same through this whole period. Um, we have, um, the CIP, which you looked at about two slides ago. The cost of collecting sewer, um, increases about one and a half percent per year. The Pepper's Ferry cost, we increased based on increased clothes and some minimal assumed increases in, um, the cost to treat the sewer. Um, we did not include any increased capital cost at Pepper's Ferry yet. That's a little bit harder to project.
Cheryl, if I could just, Cheryl, if I could stop you for a minute, because I know the council, as we've talked about capital improvement, has been concerned that we are not, uh, addressing in that sewer capital budget issues like, um, INI. Um, and I've mentioned to them that there are funding sources that we could go to if we had, um, additional grant opportunities and particularly through, uh, DEQ. And I know you're, uh, an expert on DEQ funding. You might want to just comment here so the council understands that if they want to explore additional capital uh, for sewer in the future, that there is potentially, you know, a state resource for that.
There is, um, you know, DEQ has the revolving fund, they will land for a fund money after twenty years, and there's typically possibly some grant money included. And I guess when I looked at the CIP, you know, it's not a very big CIP for sewer system. But of course, a lot of the capital cost is in the treatment, it's on the Pepper's Ferry end instead of in the town. But, um, when I was looking at the CIP projects, I thought, well, it does probably make sense for the town to do a pretty detailed, either master planning or at least CIP development, to make sure you're incorporating not only the things that have to be fixed in the sewer system, but also just management of the assets. So that each year, you're chipping away at making repairs and replacements for the sewer lines and, um, you know, the other components of the sewer system. But I mean, that in the long run has to be kind of your, your big picture look at the CIP. And I would think, um, you know, these numbers that I've given you, you probably need to look at them and update them every couple of years just based on how the CIP unfolds and, you know, other projects that come to light, which could impact future rate increases.
Cheryl, do you have a sense of what that would, a more sort of robust program like that? What, what kind of an amount we could, we should budget for that? Like fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand a year? What's, what's that look like?
Yeah, I would say, like, the CIP for the sewer, I would say for these five years is averaging under two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know a lot about the sewer system, but I would think you could, I mean, just to address some INI, you'd probably be spending a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I'm thinking those numbers to really, it's hard to just throw a number at it.
Sure, no, no, no.
Just on the size of the system or the age of the system. But my, sort of just like that tells me, that's a thin CIP.
Gotcha, thank you.
For, for a system that serves, like, over four thousand connections or around four thousand connections.
I think that's right, yeah.
And it's a very old system, as you can imagine, Cheryl.
So as I mentioned, on the debt coverage, we can meet that each year. Um, now, I included the Pepper's Ferry debt coverage. And I, I feel like the way you presented in your budget is debt service, we should include it in the coverage. But it's the biggest number in there. Um, so we could talk about that a little bit. I don't think you have a legal obligation on the bonded indebtedness for Pepper's Ferry, do you? Or do you, I mean, I know you have, you have to pay your share, but I don't know if it should be included in your debt coverage calculation or not.
It's just an annual contribution that has component, Cheryl, that includes that debt service for not just Pepper's Ferry, Pepper's Ferry, but also for the new River Valley, um, I guess it's pump station.
Pump station.
Right, but all of the legal responsibility is vested with Pepper's Ferry, not with the member agencies.
Yeah. Um, so what that tells me is if we backed the Pepper's Ferry debt service out of that calculation, it certainly gives you the ability to borrow some money and still meet the coverage. You still may need some, um, you know, if you borrow, for example, for INI projects or, um, some other project in the town. Um, there are some, I think it gives the town some flexibility in additional borrowing. So, um, on the operating reserve, as you can see, we put, um, any excess into the operating reserve each year. Um, after FY twenty-two, we're able to meet the ninety days cash on hand. Um, and then we're also able to fund that capital reserve at a hundred thousand dollars a year over that five-year period. So let's see what that does, the six, two six percent increases, what that does to the sewer rates. If you move to the next, do you, well, I, partly, do you all have questions about the spreadsheet? So on the sewer, um, rates, again, the six percent increases, your average customer's sewer bill alone would increase by between three and four dollars a month um, in the first year and then again in the second year. And I don't know with your customer base, if it means more to talk about six percent increase or if it means more to talk about a three dollar increase. But I think it's important, um, you know, to look at that, the percentage of the dollar amount.
So it would be accurate to say looking at the water and the sewer rates, that the average customer, if they're going to, if they use four thousand gallons a month, is going to see about a five dollar increase?
Yes.
Uh, in the first year, give, give or take, you know, fifty, sixty cents, something like that.
Yeah, I'd say for your, uh, for many of your customers, right around five dollars a month is, is the number.
Okay, and so that means if you, if you have a hundred dollar quote water bill, that includes that eighteen dollar, um, that you're looking at, you're looking at an overall, if you, the amount of money you write into the town is about a five dollar, five percent increase in your overall bill. If you pay twelve hundred dollars in a year, you're going to spend about twelve hundred and sixty dollars a year, roughly, depending, depending on your usage.
That's where we get back to when we do this, or if you go to rate period, we have to, we have to separate our water and sewer from the, from the garbage place, because that, you, you said a while ago, everybody sees the bottom line. They're not seeing what's broke down and we, it's very important that they see this. So we have, we have, we have to do that.
So just a quick question, under, under the expenses on the spreadsheet, where, where is the labor side for the town included under that expense? Is that under sewer collection?
I'm sorry, where's the what?
The, the labor side of the sewer.
Yes, your, uh, labor costs are included in the sewer collection part of the budget. So the employees, um, and their benefits are included in there.
I just, I just wonder, you know, if you really think about it, we only have, if you take Pepper's Ferry, uh, you know, the money that, the expense for, you know, we pay for Pepper's Ferry, we only have under four hundred thousand dollars. That actually goes to the labor and infrastructure of all of this, anything that has to do with sewer.
You're absolutely right.
In, in town for the entire year.
You're right.
Is under four hundred thousand dollars.
But that, I, so, except for capital improvement costs.
Well, that's what I'm saying, well, that's, that would, you know, that's, that would be in addition too.
Yeah.
But to actually just.
Yeah, our, our labor, our labor cost is ten percent of our sewer cost.
Yeah, but man, and so, and we have still a large amount of infrastructure of sewer within our own responsibility.
Absolutely.
Not that, I don't know how much labor, you know, would be of that four hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and the problem with the labor category generally is that we can't fill positions. We just can't get people at the rates that we're paying, uh, to take those jobs. And they're not clean jobs, they're dirty jobs in sewer. Uh, and when we have, um, an issue like the water main break that we had last night that went through this morning, uh, we put water and sewer employees out to work, uh, a break like that. Um, so, uh, we could certainly with more, you could do more, uh, just like we have. And what I tell the public works people is that the third time you go to the same break, you replace the line, you know, for some portion, because you're just putting Band-Aids on it. Um, and with the old infrastructure that we have, we know we have INI, and you'll never get rid of all INI. But we obviously have, you know, a need to address that at some point. And you've got infrastructure that needs to be replaced. But we're, we're doing well and making sure, you know, that, um, the lines are clear so that we transmit the sewage to Pepper's Ferry.
Well, just, it's not, and obviously, it's not hard to look at and see, if you take, if we have one of the highest sewer rates in, in, you know, around, not the highest, but one of the highest, third highest sewer rate around. And then you see that we on, you know, third highest sewer rate around, but we only have less than four hundred thousand dollars to actually handle all of the infrastructure of our own system. So that doesn't add up, you know, it doesn't make sense somewhere in there. And I don't know if, you know, you know, it just does not sound like a good deal for our citizens. You know, from that standpoint is, there's, there's something about what money's going out and what money's coming in that doesn't add up. Worse than we, we can't afford to, you know, we obviously don't have money available to, to maintain our own sewer system, you know, with that, with that few of dollars, but we have the highest sewer rate or one of the highest sewer rates, and so.
It's because of the, yeah.
I know, I know on our side, you know, obviously, as you just said, it's not like we're blowing money on, on unnecessary things. We're wishing we had money to pay for things that are needed. So it doesn't make sense how, how we would sit with, with the third highest sewer rate. But just mathematically, that's a bad situation, you know.
Yeah, well, and your treatment cost, your pre-treatment cost are obviously the lion's share where the money is going. And in some instances that, um, we are spending more in the collection, uh, part of the activity because of the way our sewer lines are routed. And some of what is anticipated in the James Hardy Project. our sewer lines are routed, and some of what is anticipated in the James Hardy project is to change the way the sewage flows to the pre-treatment facility. Because we have a convoluted system where we sometimes take the same sewage and run it twice before it goes in the right direction to then get to the treatment plan, and we're gonna try with this Hardy project to get rid of some of that in the same way that, as we've talked about the Brookmont water system repairs, you know, we're trying to find a way uh, to, um, deal with the aging water issue, uh, by installing a larger tank at a different location, at a different height, you know, that will reduce that rather than just adding more lines that will carry uh, water in a different direction. So we're dealing with an older system, whether you talk about water or sewer, and the way it was laid out, you know, fifty, sixty years ago, when we didn't have the same population or in the same locations, is part of the disadvantage that we have, and it contributes to some of the costs, um, that we have, but uh, the line share of our sewage treatment costs are in fact with Pepper's Ferry.
Right.
And there's a governing body that, as you all know, uh, determines what uh, their cost will be, not just operating, but capital costs as they keep their system current, and we're helping to keep their system current in a much better way than we're helping to keep our own system.
It was, it appears that after we pay for our portion of Pepper's Ferry, there's not enough money left behind for us to take care of our own system.
That's, you're absolutely right.
And it seems like we're, the problem we're having is that that excess flow from not properly maintaining our system is causing our cost at Pepper's Ferry to go up. I would assume that, you know, one of the big issues is that we probably have a lot of INI from.
You do.
From an aging system, and that's causing us that Pepper's Ferry to have to do more treatment because of more water in this, in, you know, in, in that flow than we, than we are actually generating.
Yeah, and as, you know.
Instead, instead of having ten percent excess flow, we're getting twenty-five or thirty percent. And we just, I think we just need to make the investment in doing that, you know, mitigating that to the greatest extent possible, and I think that will, over time, balance out, hopefully.
Yeah, because you, you know, every time we have a heavy rainfall, we can see it in the monthly bill from Pepper's Ferry, you know, and, um, until you address that long term, um, you're gonna continue to have that, you know, and so you just have to pray for what I call medium weather, not a lot of rain, but not a lot of drought either. And so even if we have a good scientific figure that's provided by Pepper's Ferry for free treatment, it's based upon flows of the past, and so if something happens during the year that changes that, we're gonna end up with a larger bill at the end of the year that we'll have to somehow accommodate. Cheryl, why don't you jump in again? We'll get through the rest of your slides and see if there are other questions.
Okay, so I think, um, we should get to the slide where I prepare, um, Davenport's April twenty seventeen projections to these recommendations, and much to my surprise, they end up being very similar. Um, at the top of this table, you see, um, Davenport's recommended charges for water and for sewer for that period of time from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two. And the total water plus sewer bill for five thousand gallons, you see that, um, highlighted in pink would have been ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents, and based on these, um, rates, with an eight percent, eight percent increase on water and a six percent increase on sewer, that the combined water sewer bill would be ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents, so at the end of the day, even then, maybe just last year, there was the sewer, and sewer rates were not increased, we kind of end up at the same number in FY twenty-two. Um, so the next slide does show you the water and sewer bills together, the current bills and then the projected for the upcoming five-year period. And as, um, one of you noted, for FY twenty-two, for a customer using around four thousand gallons, the combined increase is about five dollars and twenty cents per month for the water plus sewer bill. So over the year, I guess that amounts to about a sixty dollar increase, um, per year for water and sewer. All right, and the next slide, um, looks at your water and sewer bills, current and projected. I did this based on five thousand gallons and compared it to some of your, um, kind of a combination neighbors and also, um, other communities that were somewhere between three thousand and ten thousand customers. And as you'll see, um, your water bill really compares pretty favorably, um, at currently thirty dollars. Pardon me?
You're fine, keep going.
Okay, and then, um, I also compared the sewer bill, which is currently, um, fifty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents for five thousand gallons, proposed to go sixty-two dollars and eleven cents, and, um, that is, you know, a little high compared to many of the neighbors, and it's higher than the average or the median of all those utilities I listed, and is higher than the average in Virginia. And so at the end of the day, when we combine the water and sewer bills, um, your combined water and sewer bill is high, um, compared to combined water and sewer bills in other communities nearby. With few exceptions. It looks like Christiansburg, Carroll County are higher. Pilaski PSA, really comparable, um, and then Salem, very comparable. And the, these rates that I've showed, that I show on this page for the other communities are the rates that were in effect as of July first of this year. So it's possible some of these will also have rate increases in FY twenty-two, which could narrow the gap a bit between your rates and theirs. But I, I don't think there's much here that surprises you. Um, favorable water rate, slightly higher sewer rate.
And the community that I came from, their monthly rate for water and sewer is a hundred and eleven dollars a month. And the line share is sewer.
Yeah, with, which without a doubt is a high rate.
Yeah.
Hey, Cheryl, Cheryl, can I ask you a question? I was noticing this in the, in the, about the rate restructuring, and one of the things I noticed on, on my bill is that, you know, my, my water bill fluctuates throughout the year, but my actual, in the sense of how much water I use, the actual bill doesn't fluctuate all that much. I go from, say, two thousand to three thousand gallons a year, I mean, a month, and my bill increases by like four or five dollars. And I was wondering, is that, is that standard, or is that, I mean, because, you know, if, if we're really paying a lot of money for, for the Pepper's Ferry to be pre-treating our water, is there a way that we can encourage, you know, lowering our cost by, you know, because it doesn't seem like we're incentivizing people to cut back on their water usage.
Well, part of the answer to that question is, you know, you have these fixed charges.
Sure, yeah.
So on, so for most water, for the water, most of your residential customers, that's thirteen dollars on the water. I don't have the sewer in front of me, but I think it's about twice that.
Right.
And, um, looking for the calculation, I think I calculated on the water side, that, you know, you have about a two million dollar budget.
Mm-hmm.
About eight hundred thousand dollars of your revenue comes from your fixed charges.
Sure.
So, really, what that means is, you know, because of that fixed charge, the amount that your bill varies isn't gonna be very great because the spot per thousand is pretty, is a small part of your bill.
Right.
In comparison.
I, I was just wondering if any communities have been successful in, in, in sort of modifying that share and making it, you know, a little bit closer to payer, that your, that your usage is, is a larger percentage, and if that has had any impact on actual usage. Because if you could, you know, if I could save ten bucks a month on my water bill, I mean, I might be more inclined to buy, you know, newer appliances, change my faucets, stuff like that, that would have all those knock-on effects, and I just didn't know if that was something that, that you've seen done, or if there's any sort of, you know.
Um, I haven't really seen an analysis of how, you know, maybe lowering the fixed charge, but then increasing the variable charge. If you do that, how it impacts water usage. Many communities feel like people's water usage is nonelastic.
Right.
When water rates go up, they'll try for a while to reduce their usage, but it's hard to maintain that.
Sure.
Um, I would say overall, communities say definitely water usage has gone down across the community as, one, if new homes are built, that usage tends to be lower because they have better appliances. Um, and then as appliances and toilets and dishwashers, et cetera, are replaced in existing homes, the water usage does go down a bit.
Mm-hmm.
But as much as we'd like to also encourage conservation, the more your customers conserve.
That the higher your fixed rate needs to be to cover for the, your fixed cost.
Right. Your costs are not gonna decrease dramatically.
Okay.
As people slightly reduce their water usage.
Uh-huh.
And honestly, based on the six months that I looked at, I was pretty surprised at how low the water usage in town was for the average residential customer.
Okay.
Because I was thinking you probably have a good amount of older housing stock.
Yeah.
Which is where we sometimes see more higher usage, but I, I think I calculated it's under four thousand, which really surprised me.
But I think we also have a significant senior population, and it's pretty typical that seniors, uh, as a demographic, use less water than, say, families. So the larger the family, the more usage that you have, as opposed to a single individual or two older adults.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I just recently got an email from, you know, Apto, asking if I wanted to, you know, these various energy-saving things that they would pay me money for, and I was just wondering if anybody had done that in the, in the sewer water game, if, if that was a, an option. Um, you know, pay somebody a hundred dollars to replace their dishwasher or washing machine, or faucets or something like that.
There is a significant savings on the newer appliances.
Yeah, and, and that's what I was thinking, you know, they, they'll pay you to get rid of your old refrigerator, you know, you know, and I thought that's maybe something we should look into.
Um, so one thing that we talked about as a group, um, Darlene and, and managers and staff within the town was, um, does it make sense on your water structure to have these three tiers where the more water you use, the cost per thousand is a lower charge? And on that slide that's titled Rate Restructuring Water, as you can see, you know, for your first twenty thousand gallons, the customer is charged three dollars and forty-one cents per thousand. Between twenty and seven hundred thousand, it drops down to two eighty-nine, and then, um, to two dollars and sixteen cents. So, you know, without really knowing initially much about the customer base, I thought, huh, I wonder if that two dollars and sixteen cents should be increased, um, to, to the point where maybe you eventually only had two tiers instead of three tiers of water usage. But as soon as we talked about it and I looked at the, um, customer base and their usage, it's pretty clear. You have basically one customer that bumps up into that over seven hundred thousand dollar gallons range, and that's the, um, Hardy, um, facility. And unbelievably, the water that you're selling at that lowest rate is fifty-two percent of all the water sold. And, um, when we discussed that internally, I mean, first off, it is very difficult to increase the rate that affects one customer. You know, every dollar you generate from increasing that rate's coming out of the pocket of one. From what I gather, is a pretty important, you know, customer to the town. So, um, you know, there are certainly ways that we can talk about changing that rate structure. I've kind of looked at two things. One, I thought, what if we just had two tiers? The first went to maybe five hundred thousand gallons, and then, um, everything from five hundred and above would be sold at a rate higher than two sixteen, maybe around two eighty-nine. But when we do that, it affects two customers, the hospital and the Hardy facility. I just had some difficulty thinking about recommending to the town increasing rates to affect two specific customers, both of which I think you probably care a lot about, and that it might be difficult to impose a higher rate increase just on those two customers. So I, I don't know what your reactions to that would be.
So is it, is it ever been done or possible? Obviously, if you're raising rates based off a percentage, if you're doing eight percent of a, of a lower number, it's less than eight percent of a higher number, to where the rate, you know, being raised, since we have a three-tiered system, could be the same dollar amount or, or penny amount a, as, as opposed to a percentage amount for the three tiers. Is that, is that doable?
So it'd be a different percentage increase for the different rates?
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be the exact same dollar or penny, you know, for each, for each.
Right, so, um, like the three forty-one, if it's been three dollars and forty-one cents, um, let's see, on water, we're talking about an eight percent increase?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Twenty-four cents or something like that. If we added that twenty-four cents to each tier?
Yeah, or maybe it'd be a lower penny amount for the, for the, for the high, you know, for the three forty-one, maybe it's a lower penny amount for that one, and it, and you balance it out across the three tiers. As opposed for, as opposed to.
Yeah, I could back into that, and I guess we just.
As opposed to the, the lower, least amount of water usage, you protect the lowest to increase. You know, so everybody would have the same penny amount.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think the hardest thing about restructuring is when you make these changes that are not just a flat six percent, five percent across the board. It absolutely affects some customers more than others, but I could back into that number, which is, say, everyone gets, let's just pick a number, fifteen cent increase on these three tiers, or whatever is required to balance the budget. It would definitely make the three point four one go down a bit. Um, and then, you know, there just aren't that many customers or that much usage really in that middle tier. And then, um, the high tier, whatever that increase is, would affect just your one customer. I think the Hardy would, the Hardy, um, Plank Facility has two water meters or purchases water at two spots.
Yes, they do.
Um, but it, it's basically one customer. Um, so I could, if you wanna look at that, I could back into that, keep everything the same, but just figure out what the cents would be that we add on to each of those tiers, and see how it affects a handful of customers.
If you all like that, Cheryl's happy to do that, if that's helpful to you.
I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to catch up, so, um, Brooks, what were you saying?
I, I think, can I try?
Sure.
So what I think he's saying is, we're trying to get an overall eight percent increase. But we're gonna mod, we're gonna try to make that, that actual dollar increase per thousand gallons used as close to consistent as possible. And that even, so that the people who are paying the highest rate see the lowest increase, and the people who are paying the lowest rate see the highest increase.
Is that, and.
Percentage, percentage-wise, it would be.
If we do an eight percent increase, and that means we have three tiers, the lowest tier, which are residential users, users take the highest increase because they have the highest rate. And so that eight percent of them is a higher increase in their rate than eight percent to someone who has a lower rate for residential. So basically, what I'm saying is, instead of impacting the residents more and, and, and then the higher users less, we would basically balance it to where everybody's increase is the same. So, if for residential, it's gonna go up twenty, twenty-four cents, but for over seven hundred thousand, it's only gonna go up ten cents. We would find the number where everybody goes up eighteen cents.
Whatever that number is, that, that still generates an overall eight percent increase in our.
Whatever that number is, that, that still generates an overall eight percent increase in our revenue, but that balances that difference. So, you know, we, we, so that's what she's saying, back into it. She's gonna create an increase and then split it amongst our users based on their usage.
If nothing else, it'd be interesting to see what it would do.
Yeah.
I agree, and I think it's fairly easy to do, so I can do that for you.
And, and I, I think, and, and you touched on it, I think my, my only concern there is being that above seven hundred thousand is, uh, that's horrible for me, above seven hundred thousand is only one customer, and that customer happens to be a, uh, an employer of three hundred plus people in our town. I just think we need to, and, and, and increase on, on their water usage, which is their, uh, one of the primary parts of their manufacturing process, I would think, would be significant, so, for them.
Yeah, and what I will say is that I had this thought last night, in the middle of the night, and I had Bill do some work this morning on the sewer rate currently, and what Hardy pays, and what their proportion of the Peppers, Peppers Ferry bill on treatment would be based upon the number of gallons of water, uh, that they send. And actually, what we charge them under our current sewer rate is more than adequate to pay their proportion of Peppers Ferry. So I have a feeling that same thing would hold true, that same analysis on water, because the sewer consumption is based upon water. Our problem is, you know, in addition to having that major customer, uh, we have these other smaller customers, but we have tremendous influx of water that has to be treated that is unassigned to everyone, you know, in our billing, and yet is a big part of our cost of treatment. Um, and that, that is really the issue, and I was surprised by the numbers, but then, as I thought about it and realized how that number fluctuates on a monthly basis that we pay for pre-treatment, and realized how that impact of influx of water was affecting that rate. Uh, so, but I think we ought to look at it and see what it would be, and certainly if we were to consider, uh, changing that rate structure, you know, I'd be, uh, more than willing to talk with Hardy to see, you know, what their reaction would be, because it's a very important customer, uh, not just a water and sewer, but generally of the town.
Right.
One of the things I would be concerned with when you start doing, changing the rate for Hardy is, since we already base the sewer rate based on water uses, Hardy is already at a disadvantage, because then, then the amount of their water goes into their product. It, it, the duct goes into the sewer. You have to get charged a higher rate than sewer.
Well, don't tell them that, because they're paying that sewer rate, and we want them to continue. I'm just teasing with you.
They're paying more than you should.
Yeah.
So if we start changing it around, we're gonna hurt Hardy, and we're dealing with.
And you know, what, what some people do in other communities with a business that has a high water usage that doesn't go through sewer, because it goes into the ground or their product, is they have separate meters, uh, for that water, whether it be a residential property that does a lot of, has a lot of gardening and flowers, and wants to pay for that water separately, you know, not have a sewer charge, or a business. And I know, uh, we've been dealing with one business, uh, that I think is technically in the county, so they're paying the out-of-town rate, but that they have a separate meter, because they do, uh, have a function of their process, that the water goes into the ground, it doesn't go to sewer.
The, the, the real issue, I know, I, I know this is not a small issue, the, the entrance of, of foreign water, if you will, into our system, that we're paying for a tremendous amount. Um, do we have any understanding of how to get our arms around that? I, I realize it's, or is that just inherent with the system? I, I don't.
No, is it, well, you can do a calculation, I'm not sure how accurate it is, based upon how much water you produce, how much you build, and then the amount that's billed versus the amount that's treated. Then come up with a calculation, but I think most systems, even, um, more modern systems, are gonna have, Cheryl knows this figure better than I do, maybe a fifteen to twenty percent I and I, uh, regardless of what they do. Does that sound reasonable, Cheryl, or is that high?
Um, for, um, I and I, ten percent over the actual water bill, that's probably reasonable.
Ten, okay. And I think in our case, it's gonna be considerably higher than that, given the age of the system.
Um, just, yes, you're probably right.
Yeah.
Now, I was thinking we had a, the, and I can't remember, I can't remember the lady's name, but presented to us, and, and if I remember correctly, she said that expectations-wise, about the best you could expect out of an I and I study is a ten percent reduction, uh, you know, would be the, the best, you know, you know, expectation that you could have. And, and does that sound right? I, I was thinking.
I, I would think with the age of our system, we could do better than that. I think we would always have a certain percentage of I and I that just happens. It goes in storm drains, you know, uh, even when you try to protect them and keep them cleaned out and everything. Um, but I would think that our I and I is considerably higher than that. And if you, if you really wanted to go on an I and I program, uh, you would not only have to replace, uh, lines, um, but you'd need more manpower, um, from the management of those lines, and, you know, going in and camering them all, and figuring out where you need to replace first, where you have, uh, the biggest issues, you know, where it's entering the system, uh, at a far greater rate of speed than it is in other places.
Cause I, I, I would suspect that you, you would find that there's probably like ten percent of our I and I spaces probably provide like fifty percent of our I and I with the age of our system. Something like that, you know, like you've got a few big problem areas that are providing a vast majority of your issues. But then, once you get rid of those, then the rest of them become, you know, it's diminishing returns from there.
But you're never gonna get it all out of any system, even if you had all brand-new pipes to the last five years. I think you still have some I and I.
So have we had a?
And I think, um, for you all, since you're having your sewer treated elsewhere and paying for it, you know, you may reduce some cost on flows, but at the same time, what's really important is maintaining that system, replacing the lines that have a lot of I and I, because they're the ones that are, you know, the oldest and, and in the worst condition. It's just important that you continue to maintain that, replace them as needed. So it's sort of a dual purpose, reduce I and I, but also maintain the asset.
Right.
So, so I get, my question is, have we, I imagine an I and I study is extensive? And would it be worthwhile to kind of, to Mr. Reese's point, and I think I understood what he was saying, is, is basically, I mean, if there's a potential there, that there's, there's maybe a few problem areas where significant water is entering the system, um, obviously you can't get them all, but maybe you could get the.
The bigger ones.
If you will.
Cheryl, what do you think an I and I evaluation of the, how many mi, well, we'd have to know how many miles of sewer line we have, because you'd probably want to camera it all, um.
Yeah, or at least somehow, I think, pick out, there are probably some areas that Bill knows are the worst areas.
Uh-huh.
Certainly you would prioritize those and camera them first. Um.
And we do have a camera system, but it's not as effective in all of the kind of lines that we have.
With you and your bill, and ask a few questions, and just give you a number that you can give to council that's kind of a, you know, just an idea of what you can accomplish for, um, a hundred thousand dollars or something. So, oh, let me talk to Brian about that tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll send you an email about that.
I, I do think you're, you're exactly right, I bet Bill knows the worst areas. I bet he has, has some idea where they are.
If, if my meeting didn't do it, my, my first move would be to change all the manhole covers.
Yeah, you've mentioned that before, uh-huh.
It, it, uh, number one. And, and, and it's gonna be costly, because they, they have old manhole covers, but not like the new ones you buy. And there, there will have to be some modifications made, so, a lot of painted work around that manhole. But that is, that's the number one, um, that we have, that we have, I agree with you.
So, so while that may, that's certainly a long-term approach, um, starting somewhere.
And actually, the DEQ funding that, um, I asked Cheryl to talk to you all briefly about, uh, because I used it quite a bit in the last community that I was in, in fact, we were under consent order, uh, to reduce, uh, I and I. Um, some of it, uh, was survey work, like you're talking about, some of it was obtaining the kind of equipment that could actually get in and camera your lines, uh, and we don't have that, uh, level of equipment. We have some, but not the level of equipment that would help us do that. And some of it can be done with, you know, dedicated manpower, that that's all they, they do. Um, and, uh, that could be done, uh, probably absent an official study. But let me get Cheryl to give us a number as to what that would cost, because if you hired someone to come in, they would bring the equipment, you know, to do the kind of, uh, camerering that would be necessary. So we'll get you that.
And we've seen, um, I forget how it was done in Clifton Forge, but, um, I mean, Stanton's a very different community, but we would identify sewer basins. The city staff would go out and clean the lines, and then we would have someone run the cameras through and take all the pictures. And so, you know, you can have a contractor clean the lines, or you could have your town staff clean the lines. Um, but it's good to have them clean, so the tree roots and.
Right.
Grease and whatever else is in there is gone, and you can get a better picture using those cameras. Um, and then that will help you identify, then, you know, we all look through those films and look at, you know, thousands of linear feet of sewer line, and identify where the line should be replaced, where it can just, you know, repairs need to be made, et cetera. And that, again, helps you prioritize what needs to be done, and potential cost, which can then end up in your CIP, or your, you know, borrowing.
Okay, Cheryl, we've been through all of the slides at this point?
I think so. I have one little comment on restructuring, which I think I've already said these things. It's the last, um, next to the last slide. When we restructure the rates, it does affect customers differently, but I'm gonna do that calculation we just talked about, and then give you a selection of customers and their usage, current bill, proposed bill, if we restructure. Um, and that little table at the bottom of that page just gives you an idea of how many customers, um, are in each tier, and how much water they use. Um, and then just my final comments just had to do with, um, sort of your, some financial goals, um, if we increase rates in twenty-two and twenty-three, to work toward that one point three coverage, ninety days cash on hand, capital reserve, and then try to fund your capital projects that are, I'd say half a million dollars or less, to fund them with cash instead of debt, or certainly not with long-term debt. And then, um, sort of final comments, these rates that are projected for the next, for the upcoming year are very much in line with the dozen port recommendations. Um, water rate looks pretty good, sewer rate's pretty high. So, I think, I'm not sure, I think what we just talked about on the water rate's gonna bring the water rate for your average residential customer down a bit, which, um, even though that doesn't help the sewer rate, it makes the combined bill lower, which is a good thing. Um, see, I'm gonna work on those numbers and make a few changes, um, to the cash flow projections, the bigger spreadsheet based on that debt service, um, mistake. And I'll do some of it tonight, and, or I'll try to get it all done within the next couple of days, and send it over to Darlene.
All right, and as soon as I get it, I'll shoot it out to you all to, to look at it, uh, because I do think at your next, uh, council meeting, we need to get some direction from the council as to how you want us to look at the development of the budget, with what kind of a rate structure. Uh, you obviously won't adopt, uh, a rate structure until your budget, um, following your budget public hearing, um, and you wouldn't necessarily even vote on it that night, but the schedule that I see unfolding at this point is, um, that you'd have your budget public hearing, uh, the second meeting in May, and, uh, adoption in the first meeting of June, uh, with a fallback to the second meeting in June. And I've already figured out there are five Tuesdays in June, so if we need an extra meeting, we have, uh, the opportunity to do that. Uh, so I would just say that your next meeting on May the fourth, we'll try to make light on, um, activities and actions, and, and heavy on your discussion of the budget generally, and we'll have some more information for you, not just about water and sewer, but some of the other aspects of the budget. Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for talking to you all. I'll get back to you. Okay, goodnight.
Thank you, bye-bye.
And I would just say, if any of you have additional thoughts or questions, uh, that come up in the next couple of days, feel free to shoot them to me, and I will forward them to Cheryl and get answers back to all of you on any of them. Uh, this is a lot to digest, it's why I sent it out to you all in advance, uh, so that you could, excuse me, begin studying it. I've looked at it, you know, more than a half a dozen times, and each time, you know, think about it a little bit differently, just like, uh, my example of wondering, you know, how the, uh, payments by James Hardy for sewer related to what the charges were, you know, from Peppers Ferry for their flows. So, uh, this does not have to be, you know, the final thoughts that we have on this issue at all. Now we'll try to quickly go through your, the rest of your agenda, because I know it's been a while that you all have been sitting still, but I do appreciate your attention, uh, and your interest in this subject. It's very gratifying to see how you all are willing to jump in and really try to wrestle to the ground some very important issues for our town, and it, uh, each of them has major impact on the future, really, viability of the town. So thank you.
Well, let's move on to the resolution appointing members to the Housing Board of this month and Appeals, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen.
There are no comments. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifteen as written.
Second. Okay, and can I have a roll call, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, and then we'll move on to Resolution Supporting Passenger Rail Service to Bristol, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one-six.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen as written.
Second. And a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All righty, Amendment of the Personnel Policy Regarding Compensatory, Compensatory, I can't say it.
Compensatory Town Court.
Thank you. Compensatory Town Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh-eight.
Darling, just a quick question on that, the, the, the language in red was added by you prior, uh, since our last meeting?
Yes.
Just wanted to double check next to that.
And the ordinance adopted, uh, by the council, uh, the clerk has a clean copy, but I wanted you all, given that some of these have paragraphs associated with them, that you'd be able to focus on exactly what the new language was.
Thank you, appreciate that. And, does anybody have any comment on it? So I move to adopt Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero-eight as written and, uh, edited.
Second.
And a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Amendment authorizing the fire official to issue. Amendment Authorizing the Fire Official to Issue Fireworks Permits, Ordinance 2021-09.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2021-09 as written.
Second. And a roll call for that, please?
Sir, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Amendment of Fireworks Permit Fee, Ordinance 2021-10.
I just have a question on this. Did we have a fee previously at all?
Yes, and it was several hundreds of dollars.
Okay, so we're lower in this case.
Yes, but we're doing it per event. And we actually, up to this point in time, really only have one group that sets off fireworks. And their plan is for, you know, as many as six events, you know, a year. But because we had a flat fee, that, and it was suggested maybe even we look at a, an annual fee. I didn't think that was appropriate, because they might say six events now. And by the time we got to the fall, it would be ten. So we're reducing it to just fifty dollars per fee. And of course, the one that you just passed vests the authority for the issuance of the permits with the fire marshal, which is the appropriate party, not the town manager. I don't know much about fireworks, except watching them.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for a, to pass ordinance 2021-10 as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Amendment Clarifying Separation Pay Provisions Regarding Benefits, Ordinance 2021-11.
I did have one question about this, just from a language standpoint. The "or is terminated for reasons other than their position elimination or reduction in force", is that meaning like a poor cause, or is that, is it broader than that?
Or other than that? Excuse me.
Let that go with the, my, my other question.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2021-11 as written.
Second. And a roll call please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Amendment of the Personnel Policy Concerning Work Periods, Ordinance 2021-12.
So I, I, I have one question about this. So the, if I'm looking at Attachment A, which is what essentially the ordinance is about, the paragraph that's been added is language from, is it from a, the Department of Labor? Or is it just incorporating the Department of Labor standards?
It's incorporating the Department of Labor standards.
Okay, so we're basically, the, the part of the, and it would be, so if the Department of Labor changed their standards, it would, we wouldn't have to come back and re-authorize it?
That's correct, because...
It just says, as, as the Department of Labor updates, you know, roles and responsibilities, exempt versus non-exempt, all that stuff, we just basically just, it's only referring to that.
And actually, in the last year or so, the Department of Labor has increased the salary level as one of the criteria for the issue of exempt versus non-exempt. So we expect that language. But the important thing, I think, here is the removal of the previous paragraph that said the only people that were exempt were department heads, because that's not an appropriate statement. And we are getting updated job descriptions that were prepared by a consultant firm of several years ago that also provided the compensation plan that you have. And they will make the determination as to which are exempt and non-exempt first, on the basis of the Fair Labor Standards. And we'll start with that. And then our Human Resource Manager will be kept abreast of any changes in the Fair Labor Standards that would require us to modify individual positions and their eligibility for either continued status as exempt or moving into non-exempt.
And then when we advertise for new jobs, new positions, or, or new, you're building positions, it'll be advertised?
People will know that it is a...
It's exempt or non-exempt.
Right.
What their hours and how flexible they are and all those things?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of found the wording in the original paragraph a little comical. In that it's kind of like, you should be here, but if you're not, we'll, we'll work it out, maybe. It was, it was kind of wishy-washy.
Well, and I hate that I'm having to bring to you all piecemeal some of these personnel policies. But given what's happening on a day-to-day basis, I think some of them just can't wait. But one of the things that I have asked our new HR manager to do is to go through the entire Personnel Manual and update it, not only from a language standpoint, because there's some words in there that I don't understand, you know? And I've been doing this business for a long time. So I think we need to simplify some of the language. And then there's some policies that are just clearly out of date, or they're not in the best interest of the town. And so until we have a chance to go through every single page, unfortunately, I'll have to continue bringing certain items to you that I think warrant immediate attention.
I think that's certainly worthwhile, I think.
Oh, I make a motion to adopt, geez, I put it down, ordinance 2021-12 as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
That moves us on to council's comments. So we'll start with Mr. Penn. Do you have any comments today?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
I had a quick thought of elements this year. So with, you know, restrictions rolling back, especially outdoor-wise. I know obviously last year, awful lot of things that people were used to going every year, and the town of Kielaski is gone. Is there much discussion or anything out there as far as what events may be tried to be put on? Or any efforts from anybody, just curious, more so than anything, or, or nothing else? Maybe to open up the conversation of people who may have used to do, or be engaged in events in the town, for them to maybe know and understand, you know, what was possible for them to...
We've had several organizations contact us, and I know for a fact that while they haven't been through the permit process yet for use of town facilities, or the closing of roads and that kind of thing. The Fine Art Center is planning an event, the weekend of Memorial Day. We have encouraged Kielaski on May. It's also interested in doing a series of events to see if they could work with the Fine Art Center on this first event. There is a woman who I'm sure you all know, who's had, had an annual, what do you call it, race?
The Color Me Camera?
Yes.
Race.
That's already approached us, wanting to schedule something later in the year. And of course, anyone that we're talking to, we're telling them, you know, that they have to go through the standard permit process. And then any permit that we issue is going to have the caveat that they have to abide by whatever the governor's restrictions are at that particular time, because we can't even predict what some of those are. But we're certainly open to that. And I think as the weather gets warmer and people hear that more and more of our population is vaccinated, we're gonna have more of that. I will tell you, just as an aside, that Amy Hopkins, who runs our senior center, can't figure out where all these seniors are coming from that are now almost invading our small senior center. She said they're people that she's never seen before, and then her regulars. And I think that has to do with the fact that people have been, you know, kept in their homes for so long. And here's an opportunity for them to not only get out, but to socialize as well as enjoy some entertainment. And, you know, she's got everybody wearing their masks, but maintaining the six-foot distance, because they all say, well, I've been vaccinated, you know, it's a real challenge. And I know that the, the governor and others are concerned, you know, that particularly, because people feel like they're safe, you know, once they're vaccinated, that that will be an issue that we'll have to address. But we're certainly open to events, as long as certain precautions are taken. And we can, in fact, deal with our expenses. And what people often don't realize is that with many of these special events, we have to call back off of leave, our police officers, in order to, to man the various intersections in order to maintain safety. And we've not generally even thought or asked people to consider to do a different route in order to minimize the number of personnel, or even consider paying for some of that overtime. So we'll just have to deal with that, because again, the budget is constrained right now. But I think people just need to understand what it takes to put an event on.
Well, I think that's, your, your comments exactly with the senior center is exactly kind of my thoughts. Is I think people are going to be, are going to be very hungry. And, and for two things. One, I think they're, they're really gonna appreciate anything that does go on. And two, I think we need to be prepared for the thought that the turnout for any events that do happen is probably gonna be crazy higher than what it's previously been. On our part, as you said, that there's a lot that goes into handling that and, and, and controlling and making sure it goes away. But I think that the turnout that, you know, if something like that does happen, the turnouts are gonna be dramatically higher. And we, we'll have to somehow navigate the, what it takes to handle that.
Yeah, and I think that's the other issue, depending on the venue for an event. There's some of it, you can't really have crowd control. Because, you know, even if you close a street, there are people that are in the streets, you know, and you have to be concerned about how many and all of that. So it'll be a new experience for us. We're used to putting on events, but having some of these other requirements will be different. But we're certainly not suggesting that people ignore the possibility. But we are saying you need to plan it well in advance, and we need to have meetings and see what resources are needed.
Right. Mr. Reese?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
That's right.
Oh, just wanna say once again to the town manager, though I ask pretty tough questions, give tough answers. Uh, just bear with, because we're all in the learning spirit with you. And you really guide us with these personnel policy changes and all this. This is something that's been done years ago. It needs to be done years ago. And you probably got one of the most work of councils, as you've seen tonight. We all jump in here with these numbers and good questions. And it, it tells the citizens that we're doing everything we can, keep everything as low as we can. You know, explain it the best we can explain it. So appreciate all the work you do too, and park reserves. Y'all, y'all really keep us informed.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
I do have two things on that. One of them is somewhat in regards to the conversation we had earlier today, and in lieu of water lines. I believe at some point someone told me that we have a mechanism or a way of noticing that somebody, say, has a leak or has a leak. I had someone ask me, now I have personal experience, that does that, do we have someone that actually does that? And does this operate properly?
You mean like a leak finder? Is that what you're saying?
Like, basically what was explained to me was that if someone was suddenly using a significant amount more water than they had previously, that they were notified of some way.
The finance department, when they're doing billings, if they see an extremely high usage versus what's normal, then usually they make contact either, and I'm not sure exactly how they do it on a regular basis, either by making contact if they have phone numbers, or sending someone out from the water department, or even on the bill, writing a note that says, you know, kind of in red, you need to be aware of the fact that you're having high usage. And then we have a couple of people who have extremely high usage, and they keep paying the high bill. And in fact, I have one situation that they've talked to me about, where I've said to them, if they don't deal with the problem, we're gonna have to cut them off, just because we can't afford to have that kind of usage going, you know, all the time. But, you know, there are people that don't wanna be, I guess, bothered with trying to figure out why. And we know they must have a leak, you know? It's just, I mean, it's hundreds of thousands of gallons.
No, there's, there's a couple of things that can be done. They can read the meter.
Oh, yeah.
And they could die in the club.
And that's what we recommend to people, is the die and the combo. That's the easiest way to find out if you have an internal leak.
And, and, and I know they, they've done that for people, I know. But, and also have like ways you can like turn on, make sure all your faucets are off, and they'll like let you check the meter while you're inside, as Mr. Penn was saying. So you can see, you know, I know my water's all off, there's no faucets on, but my meter's still running. So that means it, it's somewhere else, besides, you know, it's somewhere in the house, or between the house and the, you know, and the...
Or it could be a line in the, in the yard.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know about that one.
And then the other thing was, and kind of in regards to, Mr. Dawson was talking about, for events, I know that, as some of them brought to my attention, are kind of the questions of if there was ever, and I started thinking about this, because it really would be difficult to go, I guess it's Washington, but if there was a way to connect like the ballpark to downtown with a walkway. Because right now, there's, there's not. It ends at about the Fourth or Fifth Street on Washington. If you went down Dora slightly and went up that way, it may be more convenient with the, the way the roads are set up. But if at some point in the, in the future, that is something that we can add to the capital outlay or capital improvement.
And that kind of improvement actually would be eligible for VDOT funding. Of course, the issue with VDOT funding is it's never enough, you know, because you wanna pave as many roads and do curb gutter and sidewalk. But I have had someone mention that to me previously. So I'll make sure that we make a note of that and put it on a list of things that we can look at. Because if we could walk to the ballpark, that might bring more business into the downtown as well. Because people would find a way that they could park in, in the downtown, take advantage of what's here, and then still get to the ballpark. So good suggestion, thank you.
That's all.
Mr. Reese?
Just two things for me, two. One, thank you for this water and, there were great analysis, it's great. It was really helpful to understand, you know, what the costs were, what they were, B to B, each person, and all that kind of stuff. It was really helpful. And I'd love to see more of that for, for more places in this, in the town. Because I think it's been really helpful for all of us in understanding where we need to make investments. And, you know, being able to explain to our citizens why we have to, you know, make, make rate increases, because we're trying to actually, in the long term, save us all some money by improving, you know, and, and, you know, improve our services. And second, just wanted to say thank you, citizens reached out about some, you know, sidewalk stuff. And you were very responsive, and, and the public works people were very responsive. And I just wanted to say, you know, I hope we can do more, we're trying to reach out to folks. You know, I, I'd like, I think people are all excited that a sidewalk is gonna get replaced, but they didn't know anything, nobody, they just, they just saw there was, it looked like something was about to happen, because there were lines painted on the ground. And I understand they were just in the planning stage. But, you know, the more we can just tell the, our citizens what the kinds of things that we're planning on doing, I think the more, you know, it, it turns out to be, it could be a little bit like, oh my gosh, are they gonna be ripping up my sidewalk this weekend? You know, to, oh wow, they're gonna do a new sidewalk, that's great. Maybe I could tell if I wanna get a here or there or something. And I just hope we could do, you know, try to be a little more proactive about some of those things, so that we can, you know, encourage, give the appreciation for the folks who are working so hard at our, you know, in our various departments. That's it, thanks.
Mine goes back to Mr. Dawson also. I had someone ask me about the car shows that we used to do.
And that is something that's been brought up as a possibility. But no one has come forward to talk with me about it. And I think the last time you asked...
Does he just need to call you?
Yes. Or he could call Jordan, because Jordan's involved in the permit process.
I tell him that would help too.
But I know that Bill Pettigo was mentioned a couple of times, what a great draw that was in the community. And I've been in other communities where brought big crowds. So I can certainly see the value of putting on something like that. So any one of... So, any one of the us that, uh, will make contact, we're small enough as a group that if somebody gets a call, we tell each other what's going on, so.
And I know a lot of people, you know, they do, they come to me at my store and I don't mind that at all. I really am glad they do because that can get the information to whoever it needs to. I've gotten a lot of seniors that needed stuff and, and Amy has done amazing job.
Yeah, she's phenomenal.
And I just appreciate that and I appreciate Jordan for putting something on our website this week for us too, that someone wanted. I mean, it was like that and they were shocked how fast we did it. And I said, good, you know, if you ask, we try to help. I mean, we'll do what we can, but if we don't know it, we don't, we can't fix problems if we don't know what's going on. So, but I appreciate the people here and everything. Um, now we'll move on to your, your report.
All right, well, let me just give an advertisement for the town's Facebook page because we have, uh, tried to respond to the council's and interest in us putting on more on, uh, both press releases and in our Facebook page about what's going on and opportunities for people. Um, so I hope that you all, as you have time, uh, go to Facebook, um, and see what we are trying to promote or make people aware of. And if you have ideas about, um, additional items, uh, please let Jordan know because, uh, he's very interested. Not everything we put on Facebook becomes a press release, but we do try to send all of our press releases to you all so that you see, uh, that communication. And, um, one of them the other day had, I think, three different places that it was located. So, I found it very interesting. Um, secondly, um, I had the opportunity today because we had a large water main break, uh, yesterday evening that had our people out, um, uh, and working until probably about 10 o'clock this morning when it was, uh, repaired. And that did involve, uh, having to turn off some seventeen valves in order to be able to work the leak, uh, which meant that a large portion of the town, uh, was without water or very low water pressure, but we got it back, uh, pretty quickly. But a boil notice, uh, was, uh, put out for, uh, certain parts of the downtown. I think, uh, north to about Tenth Street, south to Dora Highway and then, uh, East and West Main. Um, and that's a precaution, uh, for citizens, uh, so that if they will boil the water for ten minutes before they use it. Um, but I want to commend, uh, the people who worked the, the break. Uh, we had, as usual, and I mentioned earlier, we had both water and sewer staff working that break. And, um, I understand I wasn't there, but I understand they worked exceedingly well together. And so, anytime we see our people come together and deal with an emergency, we feel good. Um, but I also had the opportunity to be first in the office and so the phone was ringing off the hook, uh, with most people starting the conversation by saying, I know I paid my water bill. Um, and I'd say, are you calling because you have, you know, low water pressure or no water? And they'd say, yes, and I explained it to them. But to a person, every single person I talked to, and it must have been twenty in about fifteen minutes, were very appreciative that we were working the break and very understanding, you know. And I said to each and every one of them, I apologize for the inconvenience and they said, you know, that's all right, honey, you know, we know, you know, that it needs to be done. And I, I really felt good about a bad situation, if that's, and that may seem, um, incomprehensible, but people were taking that situation in such a positive and constructive way. And I think that says a lot about the community and what we can build on in this community to make even better things happen. So, I wanted to share, um, that experience with you. Then I also want to mention, not so much for the council, but for the public, uh, that may be listening or watching, uh, that we did put out, um, a press release where I invited, uh, citizens to provide any input or feedback on, um, our police department in terms of not only, um, what we'd like to see in a future police chief with Chief Roach retiring, uh, in terms of characteristics, but some ideas and suggestions that the public might have about, um, the future of the police department and what we should be putting more emphasis on or less emphasis on. Uh, have had very little response at this point. I realize that whenever you give people a deadline, they tend to work toward that deadline and don't necessarily respond, uh, immediately. But, uh, I have said, it's either April the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth. I'll take them both days. Um, I would just encourage the public to use this as an opportunity to help shape the future of a very important, uh, aspect of our community, which is law enforcement. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, just as a reminder, uh, future council, council meetings, um, will be, our next one is May fourth, twenty twenty-one. Um, so the regular council meeting, closed session starts at five-thirty, public session starts at seven. Then, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, council work session, closed session starts at five, public session starts at six-thirty. And if I can have a motion to adjourn? And all in favor?
Aye.